We'd like to call the two order town council meeting, August 15, 2017, here at the hobby room. Roll call please.
Councilor Inman, here. Councilor Callen, present. Councilor Christopher, here. Consulatary, yep. Councilor Boyajin, yes. Councilor Varone, present. Councilor Delvento, yes. And the President Moncrief, President Sampin.
Here.
All right, we need a motion to accept the minutes of August 1, 2017 as circulated?
Motion to accept is circulated, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Public hearing. Councilor Delvento, would you help us out with this?
Yes. Let's open up, I'm sorry. Let's open up public hearings for transfers. The first is a transfer of $3,920, finance engineering, water main street and sidewalks for the Senate Business District. Anyone here like to speak? Anyone here like to speak regarding the transfer? If not, public hearing is closed. Second item is a transfer of $2,244,000, finance engineering, water main street, sidewalk, Senate Business District. Public hearing is open. Anyone like to speak regarding the public hearing?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I should have shipped in on the last one also. The Finance Committee met earlier today and moved all of these items who are going to be hearing's unfold with positive recommendations.
Okay. On all of them, you said?
Yes.
Okay.
So I have to say it every time?
Okay. Okay, it's been moved. Hearing is closed. Next item is a transfer of $1 million, finance engineering, water main street sidewalks, Shore Drive. Hearing is open, public hearing.
Yes, I'd like to report that this is an amount for an agreement entered into between myself and the Commissioner Roy of the Department of Conservation and Recreation. In short, they are starting their project for the entire overlay improvements of Phase Two of the Shore Drive improvements, consistent with their plans that we've all been well aware of. What they discovered in the process of that valuation is that we have a water main that is very old and very close to the surface and of material that will certainly break and has broken multiple times over the past recent years and will be essentially crushed when they go and do their project. So it's incumbent upon them to find a solution to figure out how to do this. Now, this is not their, it wasn't original to their project. So they've met with myself and Steve Gallup and their project engineer and we negotiated an arrangement where they would help subsidize and offset some of the cost. The cost, the total cost of this has been estimated at seven point, I'm sorry, 1.78 million. So we're paying, you know, roughly two thirds share of this for material and half labor and DCR is going to contribute roughly, you know, in and around the neighborhood of $700,000 of offset to this expense so we can make this improvement. It's a good value for the town. We don't do the project, they do the project. It's necessary and timely because of the fact that their project's really on hold until they figure out how to get this resolved. And we are using MWRA borrowing capacity that we've identified for it. So it's a necessary improvement. It just had been expedited up the line because of the other conditions of this contract and the need to get it done. So I'm happy about the negotiation. I'm thankful for Steve Gallup input and, you know, for the DCR being a partner with us on it. So that's my report.
Okay. Anything else? If not, the public hearing is closed. Next item is a transfer of $875,000, finance engineering, water main street sidewalks, Underhill, Hutchison, Central, South Main, Taylor, Winthrop Street to Backstreet. Public hearing is being opened. Anyone like to comment on?
I can just tell you that the contract has been awarded to J.P. Cardillo. They're looking to mobilize in approximately four to five weeks and hopefully the bulk of the water main work will be done by fall and the street sidewalk improvements will be completed in the spring.
Okay, great. Anyone else? If not, public hearing is closed. Next item is a transfer of $184,000, finance engineering, water main, Main Street sidewalks, Underhill, Hutchison, Central. South, is that, that's not the one we just did, is that? Oh, this is a different one. South Main, Taylor, Winthrop Street to Backs. This is a separate?
Again, it's the same project, but it's a separate part of money. It's the lead service removal money from MWRA, so that's why it's in front of you. Same project.
Okay. Anything else from the public hearing? Is that right up to the property line? It's not including?
Right to the property line.
Okay. So if anybody wanted to have their lead removed from their property line to their house, what would they have to do, Steve?
I take that, so this money is, allows us to bring it up all the way to the meter.
Right.
I get to discuss with the manager if any of that money, if we want to try to recoup that money from the homeowners as a betterment, but we don't have to.
Right.
That money is granted to us at a 0% rate over 10 years.
No, that's not what you meant, is it?
No, I didn't know whether there was any of this. So this goes right up to the meter?
So the town's responsibility is to the property line. However, in order to get this money from MWRA, they want the entirety of the service removed all the way to the meter, which is what that money allows us to do by contract. If we want to try to recoup that money, that's a town decision, you know, basically whether or not you want to try to get a betterment back from homeowners. It hasn't been done in the past.
Right.
However, we have on some projects just brought it to property line and offered the homeowner at a certain fee to go the remainder of the way. But this is, this is a new program by MWRA. The whole Flint, Michigan thing is out of this. And so.
So does this mean it goes right into their home?
It goes into their home to their meter.
Right into their meter? And it's already, and it's covered by this project?
And the MWRA, so what we did is we put the contract out and based on how the contractor bid that project, they put so much money on the services. So we were able to calculate what they put, you know, their numbers on that and MWRA allows that to be eligible to recoup.
That's a very good deal for the homeowner.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Again, it's not unheard of to charge a betterment, so that's up to you folks.
Does the town have a cap on zero free bonding from the MWRA? And what is that and where are we at?
We're essentially at, well, we got a $5 million bonding capacity. Didn't we state on this?
Well, I think you're asking about the availability of money for the 0% loan. So for the Phase 12, I'm sorry, Phase Four, right? Phase Four funding. It's, so this, so we have $4,116,000 available to us for the next phase of funding for water main, for water main replacement money. That's for the next 12 years. So with the Shore Drive project, Center project and Contract Five, we've now are using three big projects, we're using that $4 million. So that program for the next 12 years is to complete. This lead service replacement money is not a phased project, a phased amount of money. The MWRA puts up so much money. It's not guaranteed money. It's kind of competitive money. Whoever decides to use it first. So if you wish to incorporate that money into your project, you're getting, you know, you get free lending for service replacement because they want the lead out of the service. So two separate parts of money. Your water main replacement money, which does have a cap, which is our $4,116, which we tapped into, and then the lead services, they haven't put a cap on it, but I imagine at some point they'll have to stop offering.
Thank you.
Any other public comment regarding this hearing? If not, hearing is closed. Next is presentations. We have Jennifer Kish from the Health Department. How are you?
I'm good, are you?
Good, thanks.
Can I share this stuff?
That's nice.
You can all see well with what you have.
Yes.
Wonderful. My name is Jennifer Kish and I've been the summer intern here with the Department of Health here in Winthrop. I was offered the position here through the State Department of Public Health Local Health Internship Program and I'm excited to share what we can work together during this summer improving the data collection systems in the CLEAR program here in Winthrop that is focused around substance use recovery. To introduce the kind of the program, it's called CLEAR because it is called, that stands for Community and Law Enforcement Assistant Recovery. And kind of going with that name, we do use community and law enforcement to refer individuals who have apparent substance use disorders or addiction struggles into recovery coach work and they in turn refer individuals to resources that can help them recover from their disease. We, I was brought in because we identified an issue with data collection and data reporting in the last fiscal year and my goal was to fix the gaps in reporting and from that standpoint, address any gaps in programming that we had existed as a result of, that was kind of, the data reporting might have been a symptom of that. So to give you an overview of the program's structure, you can see that there's two options for people to go into the program. One is through our police referral officer, Sergeant Sarko Gergarian. And those options include Section 12 and Section 35 warrants of apprehension, which go through the courts, as well as he goes through police calls and medical 911 call logs and determines what cases might be related to substance use. And then he reaches out to those individuals and if they say yes, they get taken into the program. We also have people taken in from the Sebel County House of Corrections, the Drug Court and the Health Department, as well as person-to-person referrals, such as if a family member or friend was having an issue and you referred them yourself to the recovery coaches. Once they agree to join, they begin an intake process and from intake, they move into relationship building, developing trust with the recovery coaches, getting to know each other, and then into the real peer recovery work, which is offering options for individuals to pursue their recovery, whether that be through clinical recovery options, non-clinical options like NA or AA, finding housing for them, making sure they're fed, any other resources that we can direct them to. But all of the recovery is self-directed, so the individual has to do it, the recovery coaches can't do it for them. And finally, once they're sustaining sobriety, we will eventually reach a point where they can graduate from the program. And you might wonder what these backwards arrows are for, and those are built-in opportunities for if an individual leaves the program. We are always welcoming them back into the program if they find a personal desire to return to it or if we lost touch with them for any reason. It allows people to always be able to seek recovery. So my methods for developing a more advanced data collection system to set the curve of data collection for us and our peer communities in the area started with observing the program. I looked over all of the previous program materials, I looked at our model, and then I also met with stakeholders, including Sergeant Gergarian and Chief DeLahanti with the police. We met with the East Boston Drug Court Judge McDonald. I met with Deanna, of course, and I met with our recovery coaches, Chip and Danielle. And through those meetings, I was able to kind of figure out where we were. Then I began creating and testing a database in Microsoft Excel, using a number of variables and kind of tailoring it to the program that we have here. And then we started implementation of the database in July. So starting in July, I continued meeting with the recovery coaches to ensure that data entry was moving forward smoothly and to address any questions they had. And we started collecting data moving forward in time instead of looking back and remembering what happened, you know, months ago. It's all ongoing now. And then finally, since then, I've, in addition to helping with implementation, I have also been working on a sustainability manual for the program so that it can live on after I'm gone. And if we have, say, another public health intern next summer, they can pick up exactly where I left off. The features of the database include a former feature that we have with the program, which was their time sheets. Their recovery coaches have always been required to turn in their time in various categories where they've been working. And so they do that just the same in this program, but they link their hours with each individual in the database so that they not only put in their hours of what they were doing, but they say who it was with and they also enter demographic information and on a number of categories and variables that we're interested in, which I'll go over in future slides. And it's de-identified for HIPAA, health law coverage, as well as just to protect each individual's privacy as they move through such a sensitive time. All of that information is stored in the database and the outputs we get from that are summaries of the recovery coach time distribution, which I will show you in the next slide. And we also get, as I had mentioned before, continuous prospective program population tracking. So instead of every three months or six months or once a year, asking the recovery coaches to report, who did you work with in the last year? What were their characteristics? We can know at any given day, any point in time, what's happening and who's in the program and what their characteristics are, and it's more easily trackable and it saves time when it comes time to report to you all or to the grants or any other party that may ask for information about this program. And that's included in a template for summary report generation so that it's even easier and it doesn't require a lot of complicated work to get to that summary report. An example of the variables that the recovery coaches input that are related directly to them and their work are here on this, the left side of the screen here. And from those variables, we get output like this of the distribution of time that they spend with people. I know the font is a little bit small, but I would like to draw attention to the fact that the orange, the yellow and the green are all time spent person-to-person, either peer-to-peer, one-on-one, face-to-face, at drop-in meetings, whether like office hours but with recovery coaches, or phone calls in which they're talking to someone on the phone, working with them and offering them, you know, options for recovery. And all, you know, over 50% of our time is spent person-to-person, which I think is wonderful. And it's finally, it's great to have proof of that. This is a list of all the variables that we have collected on individuals in the program. There are 39 of them here and they range from simple demographic stuff that, you know, just base age, things like that, to, the next column is mostly oriented around potential risk factors or comorbidities that may be affecting a person's ability to move forward in their recovery and things that we might be able to help out with, like their housing or employment or things like that. And then the third column you can see here is mostly variables related to a person's history with the system of recovery and how, just giving us information about that, particularly because we're partnering with the East Boston Drug Court. So the results that I was able to gather from my efforts with the data reporting include improved reporting schedules. So now, in addition to bi-weekly reporting of the hours that they've worked, the recovery coaches are also responsible for inputting demographic information on the recoveries on a bi-weekly schedule as well. So that reduces the opportunity for forgetting or recall bias or other issues with data reporting that might kind of make it more difficult to extrapolate things from the data. We also were able to revisit program parameters that were pre-existing and make sure that they are in line with our goals moving forward for the program as it moves out of its infancy. And again, I've, or sorry, not again, but then I also produced a written guide with the demographic variables and a sustainability guide for the operations of the Excel database so that anyone else, including Deanna, can use the program once I've graduated. I've been saying fly away, but when I fly away, someone else can use it. The more data-oriented results that I have from this program, and this is an overview, include the current data collection, how that's been working, the demographics, just basic demographic summary statistics, descriptive statistics describing some of the more interesting characteristics of our current population, and inferential statistics that compare two variables on one graph. So data collection up until now for this report, we had them, we started reporting in July, like I said, and we had them report going back to January 1st so that by the end of this year, we will have a full calendar year report of everyone that came through the program and what, everything about them, more or less. And then, so going back to January, that is retrospective, they're remembering, they're looking through their schedule and their records. And then from July 1st, it's been prospective, who did I work with today? What were they, you know, what were they like? How old were they? And so we have from January 1st through August 4th, I pulled the data and began analyzing The demographic statistics are presented here in this chart. I included the 2010 U.S. Census statistics, the most recent census, for comparison so that you can see we're pretty on target with our population. Obviously, we have more men in our program than there are in the town of Winthrop and we might have more people who are using in the 25 through 64 category than you would see in the population at large. But overall, I would say this is a pretty good match of the program to the Winthrop town population. And additionally, you can also see that we have spent 12 and a half hours with each recovery on average for this year, which is just kind of the description of where we are at now. This is a, several charts describing the distribution of substances used in this community. I thought the substance of choice would be of interest and then obviously opioids are another substance of choice. A majority of our participants are using multiple substances on this list and the list includes alcohol, methamphetamines, benzos, opioids and stimulants. Our next biggest category is opioids only and after that, it's alcohol only. But again, a majority of them are using multiple substances. On the opioids chart, you can see, and this includes people from both the opioids and people who are using multiple substances, who are using opioids and something else. But a majority of them, fully three-quarters, are using more than one of the opioids that we listed for our data collection, which includes fentanyl, heroin and Percocet. So I think not only do these describe the population, but these charts indicate who, like, that all of these are present in the community. There is fentanyl in the community. There are stimulants that someone is using in the community. So it kind of gives a picture of the breadth of the issue. This next slide indicates the housing status, the number of people in each category of housing status, and I have them ranked roughly according to the supportiveness of their housing. So we obviously have a low homeless population and we're trending towards safer, more permanent housing for our individuals. And having more safe, more permanent housing will help an individual with their recovery because they don't have to worry about, well, I have a bed to sleep on at night. They can just focus on their recovery and focus on eating and all the other good stuff that they need to do. And I think that this is indicative of the work that Chip and Danielle do. Anecdotally, I can say that they do a lot of work trying to get people beds at night and it's great. Moving into inferential statistics, this slide and the next slide will consist of comparing multiple variables. So for this one, we're comparing referral sources to multiple substance use. So using multiple substance use as a predictor of who will, how, who will refer an individual to the program. And referral sources again include drug court, family, house of corrections, other, police, the probation department, the recovery community and word of mouth. And our categories for multiple substance use, in each of those, the bar contains all the individuals referred by a given source and then the colors of each section of the bar indicate their multiple substance use status. And so I would just like to note that we have yes and no and not reported. And not reported doesn't necessarily mean that like we're not reporting it for any reason, it just means we don't know because we might not have that relationship with someone yet to know if they're using multiple substances. So I think the biggest takeaway from this is that you see a lot of yellow, there's a lot of people using multiple substances and the police are one of our biggest referral sources. Drug court, recovery community and word of mouth are the next three categories. This is a similar chart. It shows the same multiple substance use categories in each bar and it shows the employment status of each of the individuals in the program, account of them in each category. And so we have about two-thirds of our individuals are unemployed and then about another sixth in each of the full-time and part-time categories. And again, you can see here that a majority of people are using multiple substances, but you can also see that there's a larger chunk of pink in the full-time employee category. And the pink indicates that they are not using multiple substances, which is just kind of interesting and was statistically significant, which I'll talk about shortly. That was quick. Now we're going to discuss the results. So I did find that the two charts I just described to you were statistically significant results, but I cannot say that those were super, super significant results, only because we have a very small sample size. By statistics standards, we had about 100 people in this sample, which is a lot, like person-to-person, but statistically, 5,000 people is a large sample. So, and we have a lot of categories, so little, there isn't much more statistical testing that can be done at this time, but I think this supports very strongly the potential of this data collection system and the need to continue to support data collection in the system and support the program because we are touching a lot of people and a wide variety of people. And if we continue collecting data, we can support that even more. And we can also better target our resources so that if we find that there's been an uptick in the amount of the use of fentanyl in the community, we might be able to look to our law enforcement or our emergency responders and ask, how can we tackle this? Because fentanyl, I'm sure as many of you know, is a very dangerous drug. And then finally, hopefully this will not be, the system that I created will not be the end-all be-all, but a stepping stone to the eventual purchase of a case management software so that we would be able to track individuals at an individual level across time instead of at a population level, which is what this data collection system currently does. And again, I'm leaving behind the sustainability guide for future use of anyone who needs it or would like to work in the program. And I just hope that this can provide the opportunity to lead and set the curve for, I was, Winthrop setting the curve for neighboring communities and data collection because we're already far ahead of our, like, our grant cluster communities, which is wonderful. Lastly, I would like to thank Deanna for having me and mentoring me through the process and introducing me to everything. I would like to thank Chip and Danielle for their endless passion for helping other people escape from the grips of addiction. I would like to thank Sergeant Sarko Gergarian and Chief DeLahanti for allowing me to have a look into their work as police and law enforcement officers and changing their model from what has historically been the view of dealing with drug issues and kind of moving into a more community-based helping people model. And I would also like to thank the Mass Department of Health, the Winthrop Board of Health and the Winthrop Town Council for having me and allowing me to do this work this summer. It's been a great opportunity. I'm here to take questions.
Jennifer, where are you interning from? Where are you going to school?
Oh, I didn't introduce that. I'm so sorry.
Oh, no. We're all interns.
I'm so excited. I, I'm a Masters of Public Health candidate in epidemiology and biostatistics at Boston University. My alma mater was the University of Wisconsin-Madison.
Tremendous presentation. We appreciate it. I'm going to open it up to the council.
Thank you.
Counsel.
No, I mean, I think that's incredible and I agree with you. I think this could easily go to the next phase or something like that where, I mean, I look at, I've used the REDCAP database that, and I think that maybe partnering with someone in academia to help create something like that, which would be more what you're thinking with, that you could track individually on a schedule as well as do outreach with, you know, whether it be secured emails or secure text messaging to actually get feedback from the clients themselves in regards to how things are doing and, you know, get real-time feedback. I mean, I think that would be something to consider, you know, doing something like that. It's incredible.
I just want to say thank you so much. This is real important work that you've started and I know Deanna appreciates that. This was one of the things that she had on her list of things to do. So this is only going to help us going forward and you're right, we're a little ahead of the curve with our other communities and we really want to thank you for that. Great job.
Thank you for having me.
Any else? Counsel.
I just want to say, great job. It was a very impressive presentation. We're very pleased to have you.
Thank you.
Counselor Delvento.
And I'm going to echo that it's, data is phenomenal and thank you for doing this. This was huge. This was, was huge, and hopefully it'll help you with your masters. But I'd also ask you to stay in touch, because if this continues, it may be helpful to you and to the town. You know, we're putting on a nationwide tour, I think. I don't know where they're going next, but we're, as a community, we're really focused on trying to be a leader in addiction issues. So please stay in touch, and maybe you can help, and we can help you.
That would be great, yeah. I definitely will still have an email and a phone number. I'm not like, I keep saying that I'm going to fly away, but I promise I'm not literally flying away. So I'll definitely be, we'll still be in contact, so. Does anyone else have any questions?
Any questions from the public? No? Thank you so much. And thanks to the town manager for working one with the health department and the council to make some things happen. It was nice having you here.
Thank you so much.
Very refreshing with all, all the information you bring. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is public comment. Any public comments? Deanna?
Hi, good evening. Deanna, private public commissioners. I just wanted to announce that we have the Dana Farber mammogram van coming this October, on October the 5th. Pre-registration is required, but if you call my office, we can schedule a time and we can see if it's coming. So I just wanted to let the council know.
Thank you so much. You may want to get that on WCAT with the transcript. That would be helpful to the general public. Thank you so much. Correspondence? I have to say, I've got a bunch of correspondence. Most had to do with the Center Business District and the pilot program that's going to start on November 1st. We got, I'm sorry, September 1st. You know, a lot of interest and a lot of people, some concerns and need to, some information to be brought forward, which we've been trying to do and have done a nice job, but we need to get more information out. Also, I had some correspondence with someone regarding the appointment to the, the middle school reuse committee, which I'll be talking about later on during the, this meeting. Anybody else had any correspondence they'd like to talk about? Counselor Burrow?
Mr. Dick Bangs was corresponding with me, expressing displeasure at the trial program in the center.
And there was correspondence about the tennis courts as well?
Yes.
And the misuse of that.
Okay. And I think that might be brought up at the town manager's report?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay. Anything else? Yeah?
And I think both Councilors Christopher and I had some correspondence with people from Adam Street in regards to the changing and, as part of the study, and I think that's kind of an ongoing discussion right now.
Counselor.
In regards to all this, most of this correspondence, there is a meeting tomorrow night. Also, correct me if I'm wrong, if you'll just tell me the time and place. Seven o'clock, E.B. Newton School with regards to questions on the center, on the pilot program and everything else going on down there. So I definitely encourage people to come, seven o'clock tomorrow night at the E.B. Newton School.
Yeah. And let everyone know that, you know, this is a pilot program. This is something that's been worked on relative to the center revitalization since 2014. And I always say hundreds of hours of meetings, which I literally mean. But it's a pilot program putting forth in order to make our final engineering plan in place to move the center forward, which many, many, many people have been asking us to do it for a long time. So looking forward to your input and looking forward to the pilot program and making decisions going forward. Committee reports? Finance, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I just wanted to make one, since we were talking about the, the study, I, I think one of the things that might be reasonable with the, if we're trying to look at the effect of changing Adam Street would be, I think we should do one month of Adam Street going the way that it is versus one way in the other direction with all the other changes in place, so we can truly look at that. Those two as kind of isolated variables, if you, do you know what I mean? So, because I think if we just judge moving, putting it the opposite direction versus what happened in the past, you're not taking into account the changes in French Square or the other change to go up, I forget the, the street that, we're now allowed to take the left turn. Bart, yeah. I think we should, and I don't know if this is appropriate now or new business, but I think we should consider doing one month with Adam Street one way and one month the other way with all the other changes in place, so we can truly look at what the effects are.
Okay, we're going to stay on correspondence right now. We can make recommendations later, okay? We don't mind. Any other correspondence from anyone? No? If not, moving on to committee reports. Finance committee?
Mr. President, the finance committee met earlier tonight, and we had all the items we're going to be voting on in old business as well as the hearings. The 25, 20,000 for the Fund Green Communities grant shortage, 20,000 Darrell properties, 3780 for the urban grant.
Yeah.
3,000 pest control, financing for the engineering for the water mains and sidewalks in Center Business Districts, on Shore Drive, on Underhill, Hodgson, Central Main, Taylor, as well as the engineering for the water on the Main Street Underhill project. All those will move forward with positive recommendation.
Okay, great. Thank you, Counselor. Millerfield Committee? Counselor O'Keefe?
We've not met since our last meeting, but what has been going on is there, as far as security at Ingleside Park. I believe we now have fully functional a key and lock system, which somebody can purchase a key for $10. The key is good for at least a year, and then we will probably change locks periodically. And it can be purchased at the Parks and Rec Center. You can contact the Parks and Rec Director, and they will make sure they have time available for you to get that. As far as Millerfield, everything is going well. The big thing has been the lightweight fill coming in and the truck loads that have been coming in. We seem to be getting on track with that. Everything is going well, and we will be having a meeting at the end of this month, and we'll report again in early September.
Thank you, Counselor. Town managers report?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Consistent with the presentation that was given this evening, it was a tremendous presentation. Thank you. As I have warned you of last meeting, I am putting forward an official request for reorganization of the Health Department and basically breaking it into two units, if you will, two divisions. One that is still consistent with what the activity's traditionally been in the department in terms of inspections, and the Office of Inspection Services will continue to have the duties of the variety of inspectional functions and services that they have performed over the years. But we are creating a new Office of Public Health and Social Services. The purpose of this, consistent with the town charter, Article 6, Section 1, is to propose a new department to be organized under the administration of a new Director of Public Health and Social Services and under the general supervision of reporting authority of the Town Manager's Office. This new office shall oversee the administration of public health services generally, including but not limited to Substance Use Disorder Program, we just made clear, the public health nurse activities inclusive of all traditional health administration screenings of vaccines, et cetera, coordination of annual flu clinics and other public health clinics as needed, disease monitoring and control services, mental health disorder monitoring and services, collaboration with the town's public safety team as needed to protect the community from all invasive disease and other health-related hazards and illnesses, collaboration with the regional health initiative with Chelsea Revere, advancement and integration of regional health partners such as Mass General Hospital, Mass Department of Public Health, and all other related federal, state, and local health agencies as necessary, public health awareness campaigns and initiatives to further the growth and awareness of the importance of public and community health and the quality of life in Winthrop, provide advice and support to the town's Board of Health, and ensure that its initiatives and missions are advanced and perform other duties as directed by the town manager. It's supported by a wealth of information that's attached to my submission to the council. We have extensive analysis here and more detail of the variety of things that the scope of the office will oversee. And, you know, I have to thank Deanna Coretra for her extensive work here, as well as Chief Delahanty, Chief Flanagan, Al Luque, who are Commissioner of Inspection Services, and every, Casa, and everyone that's been involved, and yourself, Counselor Callow. Your leadership on this has been extraordinary. So this is a real coming to terms with the recognition that this office needs to advance and mature in a way that will really reach out to a broad spectrum of need and service to the community. I'm so proud of this because it moves public health seriously forward in this community and is a central fundamental element of this community that's been underserved and underacknowledged for, for such a history. That to be at this moment, to be able to do this, I take very, very seriously and enthusiastically endorse this move. I think it had, it was kind of a, you know, planets aligning situation where we just had the right things come in alignment. The people involved, the mission, sometimes out of, you know, darkness comes light, and the darkness of this tragedy of opioid impact to our community and to the Commonwealth has led us to a better place of understanding and of responsible service to our community. And as a consequence of this, I see this not just addressing that one issue, but addressing many other issues going forward, building capacity where it's needed, building muscle on the bone of, of addressing public health and making the community much more aware of the importance of public health. And to strengthen the conversations that we have among our homes and our families, parents to kids, schoolteachers to students, everyone, to participate in understanding what public health is all about and the need to recognize it in the ways in which it needs to be understood. Our quality of life in this community depends on it. And too many times in some communities, they look the other way, and they don't pay attention to the serious issues that are, that their families and their, their colleagues or their, or their friends are facing. And yet this community is looking it straight in the face and saying, we need to do something about it. And you are. And so I'm very proud to propose this, and I hope the council refers it to the Wilson Fin, Wilson Orders Subcommittee for positive recommendation, and then we move forward. I have a recommendation of funding here and a budget proposal as well, and I couldn't be happier to propose this tonight.
Great. Thank you. Counselor Callow?
When can that motion be made?
Are we making that under new business?
New business.
New business, yeah. Okay. Good. Thank you.
We have taken another look at the Winthrop Street Corridor as unfinished business of the town. As you know, the town council, through the recommendation of the DPDW Director, addressed the first phase of the Winthrop Street Corridor improvements and seized on opportunity there to utilize existing contracts to make some of those improvements, but it's unfinished work at the moment. And so we're going to ask the council to consider, along with the other funding requests, an additional $250,000 funding request to finish the job of Phase 1 of the Winthrop Street Corridor. And that includes the surface improvements, lighting, sidewalk improvements, and just to make sure that we finish what we started there and make that corridor really, you know, sing in terms of what it ought to be for, for a main arterial advantage going to point for the town. So that's going to move forward, and I sent the correspondence to the council to that effect, and I would ask that that be forwarded to the finance Subcommittee for consideration. We provided you tonight with a number of elements of possible funding. You know, you're getting a bevy of requests for financing for the Center Business District project. And as you know, it's, it's a multi-part funding strategy that we've taken here, really to take advantage of, you know, other resources as well as to try to minimize the amount of burden on the taxpayer for the town. But we have essentially developed a strategy, and I believe some of this may have been discussed in the finance Subcommittee tonight, which is essentially, you know, this is going to be all, it's the better part of a two-year proposition to redo the center. And like the school financing, you don't necessarily go out and bond for the entire project until you know, you get into it, and you know what you're going to do, and you know how much you're going to spend, and you know, you've exhausted all the other sources you can, and then you go and you, and you finance, you know, the balance of that at some point in the, in the process. So understanding the, the calendar of this project, you know, we're proposing that it's, it's highly likely that the town can have this financed as what they call inside our proposition to have debt burden as, as a matter of the general fund obligation and not go outside of our, of our limit and ask for a debt exclusion override. Basically, when you look at the town's debt service, principal and interest over time, right now, we have scheduled about $500,000 of debt coming off the books as of 2021. The proposal here to finance the balance of this project would be roughly $340,000 of annual debt service. So it's likely that what we can do is titrate this using grant funds and other resources early in the project, get the project moving, and then determine how much more we will need. If it's in the neighborhood of what we predict, 300, 3 million, 3.8 million, the financing of that obligation would be roughly $340,000 a year. If we go with a 10-year, no, but if we don't, we can go to 30 years. If we choose to propose 30 years, it would be something more in the neighborhood of $250,000 annual principal and interest payment over that time duration. We can, we can handle it under our general fund debt service if we time it right and keep and get it under the window after that school debt is retired. Okay? So that's generally in round terms what our plan is to recommend, but we're going to monitor that and, and see how we do over the next few months. Certainly get a lot of, you know, input from the public in terms of what we're proposing, study the pilot, you know, information, see what's going to change, and then take a, a new measure of what the fiscal impact would be on that change as a consequence of votes of the council, certainly of what you're going to decide as a, as a council to recommend. So we're thinking alongside your thinking, okay, about how to pay for this. And, and I'm just going to give you a quick update about how that thought process is going, so that, you know, we, we begin to talk about that too, okay? It's not just about bricks and mortar, it's about money, and we want to have that money conversation, you know, co-terminis with, with, with the whole process, okay? So that's, that's in round numbers what, what we're talking about, okay?
Any questions from the council? Counselor Boyer?
No, I, I mean, I'm, I think this is great. I think, you know, this is a good return on investment, that, you know, this is a project that will likely, you know, once this is completed and development goes forth, we'll, we'll be, we'll actually be making money versus, you know, spending it. The only issue, and I don't know when the most appropriate time is, Council President, to bring up, I did want to discuss the traffic thing, and I don't know if that should be done later or if you wanted to.
Yeah, why don't we?
New business.
New business, okay.
Yeah, we'll bring it up.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
No, I think it's terrific.
Okay. Anyone else, first of all? Nothing else? Okay. Town manager?
Yes. So like the presentation that we just had, we have, as you know, established a strong relationship with Harvard University, serving us on their dime for, for our benefit, an intern during the summer who has been working in the building department, really doing an incredible job. His name is Manuel. He is a master's candidate at the Kennedy School, and we've given you a little preview in your packet of some of the things that he's doing, and I would like in your packet of some of the things that he's doing, and I would like him to present to the council in September, a similar presentation about our Problem Properties Task Force and all the data and information that we're now collecting on that, and to show you incredible success in that project, where we are again leading the way in the Commonwealth through the help of Harvard University to really make a turnaround on a number of properties in our community to, for the benefit of not only the properties and the neighborhoods that existed, but for our tax laws, okay? Essentially, we're seeing a lot of return on the investment of this project, and we want to proclaim that success in September. So, I've asked that on your second meeting in September, that Manuel be invited in to show you, you know, the data that he has collected, and that he's helping us build into the capacity of the Building Department, a continuum of data that can continue to, you know, inform the town and lead us to good, strong decision-making. You know, you just look at one page here, we've, 26 problem properties were solved this year, 12 of which went through a receivership program, but most of the others, you know, were basically, you know, handled and corrected by the owner or the bank, meaning that, you know, we're getting a lot of value happening without having to resort to extreme techniques in order to encourage compliance, and that's great news for the town. So, there's more to come on that, and I'm excited to have him come in and present his findings and really represent the maturation of this process to the town.
What was the total of derelict properties in the last year?
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine?
Forty-nine that we've essentially managed through the system, yeah.
I see you're Commissioner this back there, and I know you were outside.
We've done very well with that program. That program has, you know, kept our streets and our areas from being blighted. The threat of receivership has turned properties right around immediately. I mean, we've had, you know, properties where that, you know, we've worked on prior to me being here, that they, you know, people have tried to get them under control and just haven't had half of that. So, by taking the properties that we have taken by receivership, the threat of receivership, now, when these banks see what's going on, they kind of take place down there. And, you know, and that happened, it's huge. It's really worked out well. I've worked really hard, Jim, Chief Flanagan, and Chief Delahanty, we've worked extremely hard on this program. It's really done well, and as you know, we recognize that out of, out of all the, you know, cities and towns, we were pretty much right at the top there. And we've used the tools, they've given us Nexus, which is phenomenal. We have ID paths now that we can actually go up to inspections on. We have inspection sheets that we can log in and not miss a beat, and, you know, coming down the road, you know, you forget a final inspection, just like in Villamont, if you have five in Villamont, you have to have the police, now it's going to be easy. We have a going to look at those sheets and realize there's a final due, there's an inspection due at property, so it's worked very well. Very happy with the program.
Thanks for your hard work, Mr. President. Yes. Councilor Dalventer?
I'm almost thinking it's time we hire a PR firm because we have the CLEAR program, which is really gathering a lot of attention, and I was talking to the firm as a Council of Lawrence, telling them about a derelict property and receivership program, and they may be contacting you for guidance and advice. And I know you've also had input and requests from other communities nationwide as to how this program's working. So, it might be a little, you know, a little town, you know, on the water, but we're actually really progressive as to how we handle the community going forward.
No, I think it's phenomenal, just as you said, just like the CLEAR program, one of the things we may want to ask Manuel when he presents was, how are we using that data to change the process, so process improvement? I mean, I'd love to hear, you know, with all the wealth of data, how are we using that to make it even better, you know, and that's something I'd ask CLEAR, too, is how we...
You'll be very impressed with the education that will come to you in a couple of weeks about how everything has been tied together. It was never tied together before. You know, people existed in these silos, and they didn't sort of get integrated, all this information. Now, it's going to get integrated, and our next step is to move into the Assessing Department to have real-time inspection data arrive at the desk of the assessors, that they can then go out and do their job and really improve the recovery of uncollected revenue for the town. So, there's a very big, high-dollar value proposition to this project. Okay. And we're working on getting a new Council aging van. The van broke down, blew an engine, essentially, so we're going to make an improvement on that van, but we're also looking at alternatives for that as well. Steve Lee?
Steve, I think he's gone.
All right. So, we're going to be looking at a lease option just to get something done soon because we, the seniors are out of a van, and that's not a good thing. So, we're going to be working on that over the next couple of days and see if we can get a new van for the senior center. And in terms of the tennis courts, you received a memo from me last week ordering that the tennis courts be secured and under constant security through a system that I understand has now been implemented. And, you know, consistent with what had had to happen in the past, we did unfortunately see abuse of those courts and happening and disregarding postings of those courts, and so we had to take the extreme measures of shutting, putting them under, you know, a key system, and that is now being worked on through the Chief of Police and Parks and Land Affairs Director to get the word out on how to implement that and how to get access to that, those courts. So, it's unfortunate that we just can't, you know, we love it alone and not treat things badly, but they hadn't, so I had no choice, given the information that I had received where people just disregarded, you know, using that for anything other than tennis, which is unfortunate. So, that's now something that's been implemented.
And that program was in place years ago.
It was, yeah, it was.
Resurrecting it, basically, is what you've done.
Right.
Councilor Beasen?
Except a big improvement because I know that there was an issue with someone having a medical emergency when it was locked before and they couldn't get in, and my understanding is that's been corrected where there'll be access to that.
That's right.
And to clear up, the nets weren't vandalized?
No. No, that was misunderstood, I think, from a lot of folks, that one net was not properly sized to fit that court.
So, they took it down?
So, they're getting it replaced. So, and then finally, I am happy to report that we have come to an understanding on transition for my role in the community, and thank you, Council, for working with me on that. I appreciate it. I think it's very important that the town, you know, move with some expedition about hiring an interim manager as well as a full manager for the community, and so that takes a lot of time.
Yeah.
So, we have agreed to have me step aside as Town Manager at the end of the month and take on a new role, which you will be coming forward with as a consultant to the community, and appointing an interim manager for a 90-day appointment as well as a committee to do a search for a new Town Manager, as well as hiring a consultant firm for that purpose. So, it's a lot to do for this fall.
Lower.
And you thought you were going to be able to coast on your way out, Council President, right? No. It's a lot to do, you know, we will make sure the town is in good hands, one way or the other, and, you know, I've been thrilled to be your Town Manager for the better part of nine years, and, you know, I'm riding off into the sunset as of May next year, but it will be with a great joy and happiness about, you know, having served this community. It's been an honor for me to be here, a privilege, and a lot has happened, and a lot I'm grateful for, but most of all, I'm grateful for the people and the friendships that I've created, and I want to keep coming back.
Absolutely.
So, you know, with that in mind, you know, I'm just thrilled to help with this transition process, and the, you know, the support that the council has shown me over the years has been tremendous, and together we've accomplished a lot, so.
We have. And anything else with your managers' report? At this point, I'd like to just open it up to some of the council if they'd like to speak regarding you being our Town Manager. I'll end it with my thoughts, but anyone feel welcome to chime in at this point. Councilor Terry?
I was on the committee that brought Jim to us, and I think it's been a great relationship both ways. Has everybody agreed on everything 100% of the time? It's never ever going to happen in any position, anywhere, public or private, but, you know, I think our success is far, far, far away any other things that might have happened, but it's been, to me personally and professionally, it's been a great experience. I can't thank you enough for what you've done for this town, and we still get to work with you for a little while, so I appreciate it.
Councilor Dalventer?
Sure, and I echo Councilor Terry's statements in that, you know, you look back six, eight years ago, 10 years ago, with the state of the Commonwealth, what the state of the town was in, when we came in 12 years ago, some of us, you know, a pipe hadn't been fixed in years. It was a matter of spending hundreds of thousands of dollars a year for water pipe, for water breaks. We've really progressed with a very proactive attitude towards getting things done, making the town better. We've got, all our schools are less than 20 years old, we've got athletic conflicts coming in, we actually have some money in the bank, and we're really, instead of being, you know, Winter was a small, little sleepy town, so kind of, I always thought it was being behind the curve, we're really ahead of the curve on a lot of things, especially in our look to the future. So, I really think that, like the Councilor Terry said, you know, we don't always agree with everything, and sometimes some ideas start out down one path and end up, you know, coming out another door, but I think we've really made a lot of progress and put the town in really good shape. I can actually say I'm proud of the town at this point. Several years ago, you know, there wasn't, you know, we went through the 9C cuts, you know, we're in tough shape, and it's good to be where we are.
Thank you very much. Absolutely. Yeah, Councilor Callahan?
I think that the town has moved tremendously forward under your leadership and guidance and, you know, our councils as well. I really would like to see if WCAT could run that video
That's right.
of all of the projects that we have been involved in over time, and now we can even add more to it. And I think it was at one of our fall or spring forums, I don't remember which one, but just so that the community can really see what we've accomplished in the last, what will, 12 years since the new council took effect. I mean, there's a lot of people out there that really don't realize, you know, what has happened and how this town has moved forward, and then when you see it on these videos, you go, "Oh, my God, I forgot about that, I forgot about this." And again, and just all the new stuff this year, you know, the new school, Miller Field, the center, I mean, there's a lot that's been done, and thank you for your guidance and, you know, through the years. Appreciate it.
It's teamwork, though.
It is.
Let's be honest, it's everybody pulling an oar, and it's all you folks willing to make the tough decisions, and us proposing some crazy things, but also some things that make sense occasionally, and all agreeing that those priorities make sense. So, you know, it's, and I am most proud of some of the things that people don't see, you know, the way we've been able to fix our administration of government here to the extent that, you know, there are just disciplines in place now, there are stabilization funds in place, there are policies in place, there are things that were not here that were necessary to suture success together, and that's some of the stuff that I am most proud of, that people, you know, may not see, but that will have carrying power going forward to make sure that we hopefully never get to that place that Nick mentions, you know, where we just had not, we're not in a good space, so financially as particularly. Council President? Real quick, not to belabor this, but I'd like to commend you on your initiatives in the past, and also the seeds that have been planted for the future that won't really come to fruition for quite some time. You know, we have a master plan that's going forward that we might not realize its completion for quite a while, and the Center Business District, we could go on and on, but once again, it was a lot of it initiated with you, and we appreciate it, and the town of Winter is a better place for it.
Thank you, Council. I'll talk to you really quick. I haven't known you for a very long time, but I am certainly thankful for the work that you've done. As I've become more familiar with the different initiatives that the town has been undertaking over the short period of time in the recent history, I've become very impressed with the different work that has been initiated. We saw some of it on display tonight, but I just want to thank you for that. I can remember 10 years ago, it seemed from my perspective that we were in a much different place, and the leadership starts at the top, and I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No. And Jim, I won't belabor either, but it's been great working with you. It sounds like a eulogy, but you're not going anywhere.
I'm not dead yet.
We're not naming any buildings after you.
That's okay. That's right, that's a bad sign.
However, it has been a pleasure working with you, and we look forward to continuing to work with you going into the future with the new council. We've accomplished a lot as, not this council, other councils, other council presidents, and we're looking forward to working with you going into the future. Thank you for all you've done. Thank you. Let's see, where are we? Town Managers for it. School Department update. I was able to attend a school committee meeting last night. Some of the things that were discussed was the adoption of the goals for the superintendent, the interim superintendent and the new superintendent, whoever that might be. Also, talked about 13 international students that were here from all different parts of the world, including China, and some of the new family relationships that people have made, not only with this country, but our students traveling abroad going forward. Talked about a 21st Century Grant that's an after-school program for $50,000 that's in place to help with some of the needs of families who need after-school programs. Discussed registering students for the bus program. It's called Connected. There's going to be two registrations, one being August 24th from 8:00 to 10:00, and August 28th from 5:00 to 7:00. I believe at the Gorman School, I do wrong, yeah, the Gorman School, and there'll be a fee, but it's nominal considering all the transportation coming forward. Also talked about Miller Field, its operation, its maintenance, and the excitement about having the Thanksgiving Day game here in November, so that being said, I don't think I've forgotten anything. Okay, so I thank you. So, that's my update for the school committee. Old business. Middle school site rezoning recommendations from Economic Development, Citizens Advisory. I know there's a scheduled discussion on the 28th with the Planning Board for their review. Is that still on target?
This is pending. You can keep this active on your own.
Okay.
You don't need to act on this, you're waiting a report on the Planning Board.
Okay.
If I may, I think one of the things that we wanted to do tonight was to clarify that we actually wanted the Planning Board to consider the recommendation from ECAC about the 40 yard zoning.
And I think that memo came to the council, I don't know if it came to you.
It might have been sent through to the council.
Yeah, okay. So, that'll be forwarded, or has it been forwarded to the Planning Board, or will that be forwarded?
We have, we've forwarded it to the Planning Board.
Okay. So, they'll take all of that information under advisement and report back to us. Councilor, you'll be on top of that in the Economic Development Committee.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Old business, okay, where are we now? Transfer Councilor Dalventer, you want to help out with this?
Sure. I'm going to pace myself here. This is, you're going to have several motions that are going to require a roll-call vote of, require six votes to pass. The first is a motion from committee that the Town Council appropriate the sum of $3,920,000 for the purpose of financing the engineering design replacement, the water main street, the sidewalk improvements, and service connections for the Winter Center District project, including all costs incidental or related thereto, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Town Manager is authorized to borrow $3,920,000 and issue bonds and notes of the town under Chapter 44, Section 73A of the General Laws or any other enabling authority, that the treasurer with the approval of the Town Manager is authorized to borrow and apply for any grants or aid available for the project or for the funding thereof, which grants in our age shall be expended for the project in addition to the amount appropriate in borrowed under this order to expend all funds available for the project to take any other necessary or convenient, to carry, any other action necessary or convenient to carry out the project.
A motion has been made.
Seconded.
Seconded?
They came from committee.
They came from committee, okay, so no... They came from committee. Okay, so no, no second is needed. We need a roll call?
Counsel Inman?
Yes.
Counsel Calhoun?
Yes.
Counsel Christopher?
Yes.
Counsel Terri?
Yes.
Counsel Barone?
Yes.
Wait, hold on, hold on. That worked out fine, thank you.
Could we, could we start again, please?
Oh goodness. Counsel Inman?
Yes.
Counsel Calhoun?
Yes.
Counsel Christopher?
Yes.
Counsel Terri?
No.
Counsel Barone?
Yes.
Counsel D'Avento?
Yes.
Vice President Boncori?
President Sampson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We have another motion from committee, you know, and the funding source of the MWRA Zero Interest LW SAP Phase III. And that is a motion from committee to move that the town council appropriate the sum of $2,244,000 for the purpose of financing the engineering design replacement, the water main, street and sidewalk improvements and service connections for the Winterbrook Center project, including all costs incidental or related thereto, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow $2,244,000 and issue bonds or notes of the town under chapter 44 of the general laws or any other enabling authority, and the treasurer with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow all proportion of such money from the Mass Water Resources Authority in connection therewith, to enter into a loan agreement or financial assistance agreement with the authority or in otherwise to contract with the authority with respect to such loan, and for any grants or aid available for the project or for the financing thereof, which grants and/or aid shall be expended for the project in addition to the amount appropriated and to be borrowed under this order, the town manager is authorized to acquire by purchase eminent domain or otherwise such rights, titles and easements as they may be necessary for such purpose, to abandon such rights, titles and easements as are no longer required, and to spend all funds available for the project and to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out the project.
Coming out of committee, does not need a second. Any discussion?
It needs a roll call vote.
Okay, roll call?
Counsel Inman?
Yes.
Counsel Calhoun?
Yes.
Counsel Christopher?
Yes.
Counsel Terri?
Yes.
Counsel Barone?
Yes.
Counsel D'Avento?
Yes.
Vice President Boncori?
President Sampson?
Yes.
Thank you.
We got that one right.
We got it.
Good job, guys.
With the funding source of the MWRA Zero Interest LW SAP Phase III, is a motion from committee that the town council appropriate the sum of $1 million for the purpose of financing the engineering design replacement of the water main, street and sidewalk improvements and service connections on Winterbrook Shore Drive, including all costs incidental or related thereto, that to meet the appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow $1 million and issue bonds or notes of the town under chapter 44 of the general laws or any other enabling authority, that the treasurer with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow all proportion of such money from the Mass Water Resources Authority and in connection therewith to enter into a loan agreement or financial assistance agreement with the authority and otherwise to contract with the authority with respect to such loan for any grant or aid available for the project or for the financing thereof, which grants and/or aid shall be expended for the project in addition to the amount appropriated and to be borrowed under this order, the town manager is authorized to acquire by purchase eminent domain or otherwise such rights, titles and easements as they may be necessary for such purpose, to abandon such rights, title and easements that are no longer necessarily required, to expend all funds available for the project and to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out the project.
Coming out of committee, does not need a second. Any discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Counsel Inman?
Yes.
Counsel Calhoun?
Yes.
Counsel Christopher?
Yes.
Counsel Terri?
Yes.
Counsel Barone?
Yes.
Counsel D'Avento?
Yes.
Vice President Boncori?
President Sampson?
Yes.
Thank you.
With the funding source of the MWRA Zero Interest LW SAP Phase III, from committee, Finance Committee motion that move the town council appropriate the sum of $875,000 for the purpose of financing the engineering design replacement of the water main, street and sidewalk improvements and service connections on Underhill-Hutchison Central South Main and Taylor, Winterbrook Street, from Main to Banks Streets in Pearl Street, including all costs incidental or related thereto, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow $875,000 and issue bonds or notes of the town under chapter 44 of the general laws or any other enabling authority, and the treasurer with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow all proportion of such money from the Mass Water Resources Authority and in connection therewith, to enter a loan agreement or financial assistance agreement with the authority and otherwise to contract with the authority with respect to such loan for any grant or aid available for the project or for the financing thereof, which grants and/or aid shall be expended for the project in addition to the amount appropriated and to be borrowed under this order, the town manager is authorized to acquire by purchase eminent domain or otherwise such rights, titles and easements as they may be necessary for such purpose, to abandon such rights, titles and easements as are no longer required, to expend all funds available for the project and to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out the project.
Coming out of committee, does not need a second. Any discussion? If not, roll call?
Counsel Raymond?
Yes.
Counsel Calhoun?
Yes.
Counsel Christopher?
Yes.
Counsel Terri?
Yes.
Counsel Barone?
Yes.
Counsel D'Avento?
Yes.
Vice President Boncori?
President Sampson?
Yes.
Thank you.
We have another item coming out of committee, which is the funding source of the MWRA Zero Interest Lead Line Replacement Program. From committee, Finance Committee moved that the town council appropriate the sum of $184,000 for the purpose of financing the engineering design replacement, the water main, street and sidewalk improvements and service connections to Underhill-Hutchison Central South Main and Taylor, Winterbrook Street, from Main to Banks Streets, including all costs incidental or related thereto, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow $184,000 and issue bonds and notes of the town under chapter 44 of the general laws or any other enabling authority, and the treasurer with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow all proportion of such money from the Water Resources, Massachusetts Water Resource Authority, in connection therewith, to enter into a loan agreement or financial assistance agreement with the authority and otherwise to contract with the authority with respect to such loan for any grants or aid available for the project or for the financing thereof, which grants and/or aid shall be expended for the project in addition to the amount appropriated to be borrowed under this order, and the town manager is authorized to acquire by purchase eminent domain or otherwise such rights, titles and easements as they may be necessary for such purpose, to abandon such rights, titles and easements as are no longer required, to expend all funds available for the project and to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out the project.
Motion comes out of committee, does not need a second. Any discussion? Counsel? If not, Counsel correct.
Counsel Inman?
Yes.
Counsel Calhoun?
Yes.
Counsel Christopher?
Yes.
Counsel Terri?
Yes.
Counsel Barone?
Yes.
Counsel D'Avento?
Yes.
Vice President Boncori?
President Sampson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now we get to some good ones. From Finance Committee move that the town council vote to transfer $20,000 from the town council reserve to replenish the general fund special article FY14 derelict properties for maintenance of derelict properties, but take any other action thereto.
From committee, coming out of committee, no second is needed. Any discussion? If not?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes.
From the Finance Committee, move that the town council vote to transfer $20,000 from the town council reserve to the Green Communities Grant to fund a shortage in the grant as a result of low and unexpected utility rebates from energy efficiency projects or take any other action thereto.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Okay, my committee?
Committee.
Oh, it's from, I'm sorry, from committee. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's why you're here, Denise. Thank you. Next.
From committee, the committee moves that the town council vote to transfer $3,780 from the town council reserve to the Urban Agenda Grant to fund a shortage in the grant or take any other action thereto.
From committee, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes.
From committee, move that the town council vote to transfer $3,000 from the town council reserve to replenish the general fund special article pest control or take any other action thereto.
From committee, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. We're done? Are you sure? I'm gonna have to give him some of that. Have to buy him a beer later on after the meeting. Under new business, we discussed the transition plan. I think Counsel Barone may have a couple of motions we're going to be bringing forward regarding that transition.
My first motion is that I move that the town council appoint James McKenna as project consultant and council advisor from September 1st, 2017 to May 15th, 2018, or take any other action relative thereto.
Motion has been made. I have a second. Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes.
Counsel President, I have another motion. I move that the town council appoint an interim town manager starting on September 1st, 2017, for a period not to exceed 90 days as per the town charter, or take any other action relative thereto.
Motion's been made. Second.
I think you should do that as of August 29th.
Okay, yeah.
And then you'll have someone to actually name.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, what we're gonna do is we're gonna call for a meeting on, a special meeting on the 29th of August, and that might be in a more appropriate time, yeah, for that particular motion. So if you can withdraw your motion?
Okay, we could.
Go on, Counsel.
I'll withdraw the motion.
Okay, until that time.
And I have one more motion.
Yeah.
I move that the town council solicit the support of the Carlin Center at UMass Boston for recruitment services for the position of town manager, and to appropriate $15,000 from the town council reserve to a special article for said purposes, or take any other action relative thereto.
Second to finance, if you want. You can waive the rules and adopt. You have the choice.
Why don't we, we'll refer that to finance.
I'd make a motion to refer to finance.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second it? Okay, we'll refer that to finance. Thank you. And did we have one more, or we're gonna hold that?
We're gonna hold that.
Okay, great.
And Counsel President, what about my motion?
Your motion?
I'd like to make a motion to establish a new office of public health and social services. Is that, is this the right time to do that?
Well, you're referring my report out to the Public Safety Committee, and then you make a recommendation.
Okay.
You can do that as of the 29th, so you can.
Okay.
You can.
I think, I think we.
We have one more. Yeah, I thought we did. Yeah.
So, I'm sorry, your motion.
It's okay. Yes, we'll take it.
I'll second your motion to refer to finance.
No.
We're gonna discuss it at Public Health and Safety, and then we'll make our recommendation.
You need to, you need to refer?
You do. Take a motion to refer my report to the Public Health and Safety.
A motion to refer.
Motion's been made to refer.
His report to the Public Health and Safety.
Town Manager's Report to the Public Health and Safety Committee.
And rules and ordinances.
And rules and ordinance.
Can we do a combined?
Because this is a reorganization.
Okay.
Yep.
Do I have a second on the motion?
I have a second. I got a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Abstentions? None? Okay, motion's been referred.
One more, one more motion.
Yeah, okay, yes.
Okay, I move that the town council ratify the agreement negotiated by and between the council president and town manager for the purpose of accepting the transition of roles and responsibilities of the office of town manager, or take any other action relative thereto.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Been seconded. Counsel Barone? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
That didn't need to be a roll call.
Okay, what else do we have under new business? Yeah?
We have a motion for $120,000.
Yeah, $120,000 stabilization. Yeah. We'll refer that.
To finance.
Yeah, go on.
You have the motion, yeah? Nick?
Move that the town council transfer the amount of $102,000 from Capital Stabilization Fund Number 964 to the fund, to fund school capital expenses for fiscal year 2018, and thereby create a special article in the general fund for said purposes, or to take any other actions relative thereto.
Motion to refer to finance and advertise.
Motion made to refer to finance. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Yeah.
All in favor? Aye opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
I'm not sure. Do we have to advertise that?
Sorry?
Do we have to advertise?
$25,000?
Yes.
My motion was also advertised.
So we refer it to finance and advertise?
Sure.
Do we have to withdraw the original?
That we can do, I don't think, without advertising, right?
We can't do it without advertising. We have to advertise it.
The withdrawal?
We have to advertise, but do we have to withdraw our original motion?
Yes, yes, you do.
We have to withdraw it.
Yes, we do.
We have to make the motion.
This is a housekeeping matter. It was adopted without being properly advertised. So we need to withdraw the original motion.
Okay, who made the original motion?
Counsel Barone. No, Counsel Terri made the original.
Yeah, that there?
Withdraw.
Withdraw.
Okay.
Do I withdraw the second?
Okay.
Yeah, second. Do we have a second to withdraw?
Counsel Barone.
Yeah, okay, can we, all in favor withdrawing?
Can we, should we wait?
It should have come first.
Okay, we put the card in front of the horse.
Go ahead, do it. We'll get the record straight.
Yeah. All in favor withdrawing the motion before us?
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed? A little hesitation. Opposed? No? Motion carries. Okay, no.
Should we re-vote?
Yeah.
That's a referral.
This, for the other one, it's just a referral. A motion that the town council transfer the amount of $18,540 from town council reserve fund to fund health and clinical services department supplemental budget expenses for the year, fiscal year 2018, or take any other action relative thereto.
Motion to refer.
Second.
To finance, yeah. Second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Are we cleaned up housekeeping there? Counsel correct?
Yeah, still a couple more of the business. National Grid Pole.
Yeah, National Grid Pole, Street and Stow. To Counsel, Town Manager, can you just give us an update on that?
We have received a petition for the golf club, let's see, for a location of a pole included in your packet.
Yeah.
That should be noticed properly and posted for a public hearing.
Right. There'll be a public hearing on September 5th.
And the only butter there is golf club. Is that it?
We need motion to.
Well, it's actually 200 feet around, so the town and maybe the.
So we need a motion to refer that?
Yes.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Refer to.
Well, you generally, you know what, you generally don't refer these. They're pretty, you know, self-explanatory.
Just a public hearing?
Yeah, you just.
We'll bring National Grid in?
Public hearing, and then they'll come in and give their report.
Okay, okay. So request, make that, yeah. Yeah?
I just have a question for the town manager. I may make a motion.
Yeah.
You had mentioned the Winterbrook Street Corridor project. Do I need a motion to refer that to finance? That?
Yes, that authorization request. I have, I believe I put in an actual motion yet. I've just put a memo of information, but we can then supplement. If you want to refer the matter, the subject matter, we'll submit a motion, a $250,000 request. That's not in your packet at the moment.
So I can't refer the?
Didn't make the agenda, unfortunately.
Okay, so I will refer the, I will make a motion to refer the subject matter to finance of the Winterbrook Street Corridor's $250,000 shortfall.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of referring the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
We'll supplement their agenda.
Motion carries.
A motion.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Can I ask my finance team members, is a chance I may not be here the 29th, can we have a Finance Committee meeting one night next week, either Monday or Tuesday? Does that work for, late afternoon for you guys?
Heading back to college Monday or Tuesday. I won't be here.
I will, I can make, what are we talking, the 21st or 22nd?
Yes.
I can, I should, I could make either day, as long as it's after 6:00.
How about the 24th, the Thursday?
Thursday?
24th is fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
6:00 or 7:00?
6:00 is fine, I mean, Thursday's fine, 6:00.
Counsel Clark? Can we schedule finance 6:00 on the 24th with all the items we're afraid tonight? Thank you.
And I wanted to try to schedule an appointment, a meeting for the Public Health and Safety and Rules and Ordinance combined meeting. Who is, is it?
The chair, I'm on the.
Fills the chair.
Fills the chair, he's not.
Right, he's not here, but would Tuesday, the 23rd work?
Tuesday, the 23rd.
Could, should.
At 7:00.
Wednesday's the 23rd.
I cannot do the 23rd.
I can't do the 23rd.
Tuesday, the 22nd then, or is Wednesday the 23rd?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, the 22nd then.
Tuesday, the 22nd at 7:00 P.M.?
7:00 P.M., and where should we, when would we be able to have that?
I'll start it down here.
Not here, I'm just not, yeah.
Okay, okay.
7:00?
Yes, with the combined, with the.
Yeah.
Okay, all committees in place, all committees have their dates.
We're going to talk about some appointments.
Yes, anything else, Counsel?
No, thank you for letting us do that.
Not a problem. We've got a few appointments, we saved one for the last one, but motion that the Town Council affirm an appointment of Helen Haddo, appointed a councilon agent, her term expires June 30th, or will expire to June 30th, 2020. Motion. Motion's been made, second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. That the Town Council affirm the appointment of Marian Sauser, I believe, to be reappointed to the Cultural Council for the second term of a three-year term, to expire in 2021.
Motion.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you for speaking up. Motion that the Town Council affirm the appointment of Guy Hillman to be reappointed to the Cultural Council for a second term of a three-year term to expire in 2021.
Motion.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And we talked about, and we put together, we had a vote, I believe it was our last meeting, if not the meeting before, on a committee to help with the site review of the middle school. I'll read the charge, and then I'm going to read some of the appointments, not all of them, but I'll read some of them. The committee will be called the Middle School Site Review Development Committee. Its charge will be to guide the redevelopment of the middle school and other process on that site, including hockey rink. The committee chair, the committee will work to develop a final site plan, zoning, urban design guidelines, financial plans, implementation of such plans, and report back to the Economic Development Committee and/or before the full council with its recommendation. That committee will consist of eleven folks, actually, one from the planning board to be announced, one from the Chamber of Commerce to be announced, a town counselor or a designee to be announced, four citizen members, one would be Michael Ruzioni, who's going to chair the committee, Joe Aiello, Lisa Albegatti, and Dick Lawton. Also on that committee will be town manager or designee, police chief or designee, and two ex-official youth members, and I'm not going to name those, Mary Lou is here, and she did send me a letter, and I'm going to honor her request of one of those folks, but I will name, I'm trying to get the second person in place, I will name them at our next committee. So again, this committee will be to look at the middle school site, come up with some recommendations, some plans, including financing and other recommendations to be brought to the Economic Development Committee, as well as the full council. Anything else?
Yes.
Yes?
I wanted to, I'm not sure of the problem, but I wanted to make a motion to actually amend the traffic study to include, it's a 60-day study to include 30 days with Adams Street in each direction, so we could properly look at the effect it would have on the new traffic pattern. I don't know if I, if I need to make a new.
Well, we certainly can entertain the motion, I just want to make the council aware that at our last council meeting, we did get them, give them the authorization and the authority to make that decision with T S A C, and that includes the fire department, the police chief, the fire chief, D P W, and other folks, so I'd be willing to entertain a recommendation, but I'm not sure I'm willing to entertain a motion at this point.
Could I elaborate maybe on my thinking, is that?
Yeah.
I don't think we could properly study the effect of the changed pack, to know the effect of the Adams Street reversal without looking at it in both directions, because all we're doing is comparing it to the old traffic pattern, which is going to be changed, meaning we're altering French Square, so how are we going to know the effect on the, how do we know the effect of Adams Street's reversal when we're modifying a bunch of other things? I think we should, at least, for the Adams Street folks, we should at least honor that we should study the effect of each way on, with the rest of the traffic pattern changes, I guess, is what I'm talking about.
Anything else, Counsel Cala?
I don't, I can't understand what you're saying, because I don't think it would change the way the traffic pattern is right now, it has nothing to do with the center, it goes Woodside to Adams and then out, it doesn't go into the center, so how would that affect the center?
Well, what I mean is that, so we're making a change.
I know, we're making a change.
Okay, for the chair, please.
So the proposal is to change the Adams Street patent based on, no engineering recommendation, based on a suggestion, to change that, and along with all the other changes, so my point is, how do we know if that, how do we know that it wouldn't be better if it was left alone? How do you know that?
Well, because, the reason they're changing it is so that people going up Bartlett Road, if they want to go back down into the center, they can go down Adams Street and go down Woodside out, and that's their loop around to go back into the center. The other way, it has absolutely nothing to do with the center, it's just Woodside, Adams, and then out, you can't go anywhere.
But.
Hold on, please, hold on, hold on, hold on. Counsel.
I voted against this last week, I was the only council to do so two weeks ago. However, having, having done that, we can go to every street and say, why don't we take one month doing this and one month doing that? I have my reservations with the whole thing, and I still encourage people to come to a meeting tomorrow night at 7:00, and you'd be able to voice their concerns. However, having said that, I think a lot of people did a lot of work to come up with this plan, and there's been town money spent already, because one of the concessions to change Adams Street was to make that left turn on Woodside going up Bartlett, and last Friday, all day, from 7:00 to 3:00, they were out there, and I'm sure it cost the town a few bucks, to make that change work, they had to cut back the sidewalk in front of Savicis, and that is done to help the residents and facilitate this, so it enables them to get out in it easier. So I think we can nitpick this through, we should just try, you know, closing Hagman Road for one month, we should just try making Putnam Street a one-way for one month, you know, we could go on and on and on. Again, I voted against it, but I know at the last meeting, we did say it wasn't about a few individual people, it was about what the committee on the whole felt was the best thing for the town. I'm not in favor of the plan, but I think we should give it the one month, and then regroup and see what happens. One month is the.
No, it's two months.
Two months.
60 did, yeah.
From September to October 30th, right? And, and then we, and then adjust and see, but I.
So what do you, sorry.
I just think we're in no, I don't even know if we can, because the council voted to do something last week, I don't even know if we can do that, but.
That's my point.
I just think it's a good point, and I respect that you're, you know, listening to feedback, but I think that's what the process is for, let's see what happens, let's listen to feedback tomorrow night, and then come back in two months and see what we say.
And we may make that recommendation, I have no problem making the recommendation. I'd say we let it go in place the way the plan has been put in place by T S A C, and then at the end of the 30 days, if they feel there's a need, with a recommendation from the council or a counselor, if they feel there's a need to try to adjust and make a switch, then we'll leave that up to their expertise, they put a lot of time and effort into this. And this is, again, it's a pilot program, it's something we're testing to make some final decisions relative to the infrastructure, and the final look of what French Square is going to look like in the center, so I'd like to, in my opinion, keep things as they are, and let the T S A C manage that pilot.
Could we refer it to that committee for consideration, and ask them what their opinion would be? I think that'd be reasonable, so we could get their expert opinion.
I think we have done that, we did that in the last vote, and I think that, I think they're well aware of it, and they're probably hearing it from a lot of people. Counsel Verone?
Well, just procedurally, there's a motion on the floor, if there's no second, then the motion dies.
Right, thank you, yeah. There is a motion on the floor, is there a second on that motion?
I'm sorry, what's the motion?
The motion is to illustrate or have that Adams Street have a direction in one direction for 30 days, and then to reverse that direction. Am I correct?
Yes, that was correct, Counsel President.
Okay, is there a second on that motion? If not, the motion fails, thank you.
Counsel President, did we get a vote on the nominations for the middle school site?
Maybe we did not, so, would you like to bring that forward?
Make a motion to accept the recommendations.
Make a motion to accept the recommendations.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of that, recommendations for those appointments?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Abstentions? Thank you, Counsel.
Counsel Cristoban?
I just want to say, I understand that we might not be able to have been made a motion, or binding motion, on the Adams Street thing. Me personally, as far as having the right amount of information that I would like to have to make this decision in the future, it would be something that I would like to know more about, as far as the implications that that's going to have with the existing pattern, and the committee or whoever's organizing this can do whatever they will with it, but that is a piece of information that I think would help me make a decision on this after the pilot is done.
Yeah, and just, Counsel Ringman, yeah. No, no.
Oh, I was just going to suggest, it would be really helpful in, you know, say mid-September to get a report back from, with the data on how the.
30 days in?
How it is going, and so that at that point.
Yeah, okay, I think that might help.
We can make a decision about whether or not it does make sense to try Adams Street going the other way. I mean, I think that's a really good point.
Yeah.
I do want to see the pilot project go forward till we get the data that we want, but maybe we do need to.
I agree with Counsel Cristoban, I agree with you, so maybe 30 days, and we can get some, some data back to us.
I have to go back and see if that's feasible, relative to the deployment of the equipment and everything we're doing, with all due respect, I will get back to you in court on whether we can.
And don't forget, you know, this council's made some tough decisions regarding this whole plan, and, and, you know, we have to stand strong in some regards, we absolutely positively have to take everybody's consideration, but, you know, this money needs to be spent that we receive from the state, and we really want this outcome to be what's best for the town of Winthrop and the center, and the residents, but there's going to be a lot of, there's going to be some inconvenience, there's going to be some confusion, there's going to be some resistance, and, but there needs to be some, some support and some help from, from the residents and from the businesses. We're working hard to try to make it happen for you, not against you, and we hope that you take that into consideration. Counsel Boyajin?
No, and just for a point of, when Counsel Davento and I were meeting with Director Cala, we did actually discuss that, and he thought it would be reasonable, so he didn't think that it would be too much, and he thought that would provide some meaningful data.
Okay, so we can make that referral to him, or the recommendation 30 days in.
Okay.
Yeah, and the more information we have, the better we are.
Correct.
But we just don't want to hinder what we've accomplished so far, and, you know, input's important, like Counsel Otero said, tomorrow night there's a meeting, but we're trying, if we didn't make these bold decisions and to push this thing forward, people would be coming to us and saying, look at our center, it's dying, what are you doing about it? So, you know, it's a double-edged sword, we're really trying hard to appease everybody, and make the right thing happen for the community, and I hope everybody realizes that. Some tough decisions were made by this council, and by the town manager, so. Anything else we have, public comment? Any public comment? Yes, sir?
Bill Schmidt, Vice Chair of the Board of Health, resident precinct director, just have a couple of comments. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Jennifer on the presentation she made to our Board of Health last week, and it's terrific, and I commend Deanna for bringing it to us. Second of all, I'm very interested in what Manager McKenna has said about public health and new proposals, looking forward to that, and on a personal, playing tennis, I appreciate you putting the locks there, I think that'll be a big help.
Thank you. Any other public comment? If not, public relations, do we have any public relations, anyone in the council?
Well, we have a special meeting now, August 29th, but I would say we're starting to get ready for back to school, and, you know, it's going to be interesting with the center and everything else, so I encourage people to start thinking ahead, because it'll be here soon enough, Labor Day's coming, and back to school's right around the corner.
Anything else? If not, motion to adjourn?
So will.
Second it? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.